Open the meeting. We're at 5:30. Okay, welcome everyone. This is Mayor Bob. I'm at City Hall. We have every council member in place and our staff is here to help us through tonight's meeting. Got a very, a very full agenda and lots of really good topics. So with that introduction, I'm going to request a roll call for formalities and this session is formally opened.
Mayor Giles.
Here.
Councilmember Nielsen.
I am.
Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Councilmember Machesek.
Present.
Councilmember Thrower.
Here.
Thank you, council. If everyone could stand up, I will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the great heath and justice of the world. First item on the agenda is to approve tonight's city council March 30th regular meeting agenda. Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve tonight's agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Hearing no opposition, the agenda is approved. Next item is the consent agenda. Is anyone interested in removing any of the items to discuss at a later time? Are you good with the consent agenda, everyone? And I'll ask for a motion to approve that.
Will we approve the consent agenda?
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve tonight's consent agenda. May I have a roll call on that motion?
Councilmember Nelson.
Yes.
Councilmember Machesek.
Yes.
Mayor Giles.
Yes.
Councilmember Nielsen.
Yes.
Councilmember Thrower.
Yes.
Thank you, council. That motion carries. Our next item is general public comment. As of 3 o'clock, I think we all received one written comment. Thank you, Bessie Jo, for mailing that out to all of us. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that would like to talk to us about general public comment? We have two hearings coming up and that will have a separate public comment on that. But is there anyone that would like to talk to us on any topic? Okay. And is there, Annette, could you check or Colby? There's anyone that had signed up?
Nope.
Okay. Council, did you all receive that one comment? All right. Well, then we're going to move on to the first of two public hearings tonight. And Brian, before I call on you, and thanks for, thanks for a really good packet on both these topics. Appreciate it being really well organized. The purpose of tonight's first public hearing is to request and adopt an ordinance approving amendments to Title III of the McCall City Code. And this relates to the scenic route overlay zone and service stations or areas that pump fuel, gasoline, diesel, et cetera. So Brian, would you please, well, let me call for a motion to open the public hearing and then I'm going to ask you to introduce the topic to us.
Will we open the public hearing?
Thanks, Colby.
Second.
Thank you, Lyle. Motion has been made and seconded to open tonight's public hearing on the adoption of ordinance approving CA 22-03 amendments to Title III of the McCall City Code. We have a roll call vote on this motion.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yes.
Mayor Giles.
Yes.
Councilmember Machesek.
Yes.
Councilmember Thrower.
Yes.
Thank you, council. That motion carries. So the public hearing is formally opened and we've stated the purpose. Brian Parker is going to be presenting because in tonight's first public hearing, the city is actually considered the applicant, right? All right. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Mayor Giles, councilmembers. Yeah, so this is actually a long continuation of a very previous application. Code Amendment 20-03 that you guys heard in January 2021, excluding prohibition on service stations within the scenic route overlay zone. At that hearing, you all voted to approve the code amendment without that specific section of it, or man that part back to staff for further research and clarification, a little more refinement. And this new code amendment is the outcome of that overdue research. So, yeah, we tried to be a little more tactful in how we approached it. So by, one of the things we did was we separated out the fuel island portion from the service stations and convenience stores, so that they are treated as separate land uses. That does a couple of different things. It allows for more traditional service type light auto repair businesses to be conditionally approved in appropriate zones. And then it also makes the existing non-conforming service stations more allowable to expand and grow in the conforming portions, particularly the convenience store elements of it. So the service, the fuel islands couldn't be expanded upon anymore, but the service or the convenience store and service station components in the community commercial loan particularly could. That makes sense. So generally added a new definition to, of diesel and fuel or gasoline and diesel fueling islands to pride, to impress on what that is. Modified the service station definition to state that it can be with or without gasoline diesel fueling islands. Updated all the code use charts in all various zones to allow for that and define what is allowed, conditionally allowed, prohibited. And then finally prohibit service stations with gasoline diesel fuel islands within the scenic route overlay zone. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Well, there's, there was quite a bit of good public input that we got and you've had a chance to review that. We'll get to that next. But sure, there is a little confusion on my part reading through the packet on that. So we'll probably have, once we review those, those questions with you, hopefully you can clarify that. And you got a copy of all those comments, right?
Yeah.
There were like five of them, five of them, or is that correct, Bessie Jo? For this public hearing? Council, would it be helpful to go into the public comments first or do you have initial questions you'd like to ask before we do?
I have one initial question. May I? Brian, under this definition, and I mean, maybe we should go through the public comments first, I'm not sure, but under the definition of a service station, if you read that, what is that? I mean, there's several components.
Yeah.
And I, I'm not sure what a service station is.
Right.
And is not. I think, you know, my interpretation of it is anywhere from possibly like a Brunel type place, like the comments that says, to possibly a parcel or premise, but I'm not sure what it's supposed to contain. So, yeah, if you, if, if, from the SaaS perspectives or from, you know, yeah, if you could kind of pick, pick a business around here, I mean, we've got, you know, Brunel, we've got miners with a gas station, we've got.
Yeah.
You know, all sorts of different combinations of Chevron.
Right.
As a few of those components, what, what would be the minimum of a service station under this definition?
So if it meets any of the various criteria in here, it would be qualified as a service station. Chevron is a good example. It includes all of the above. It's got light auto repair, sale of tobacco snacks, driver goods, miscellaneous repair items, fuel islands. So that's kind of the all above example. Then, yeah, as you mentioned, miners, the other convenience stores throughout the Highway 55 area.
Like Mavericks.
Yeah. Would all qualify.
That's not what I, how I'm reading it, but we'll take it into that later. And just to get quite a bit of clarification on the one that's in there.
Yeah, that's where the confusion came in in my mind, too. And our commenters in good faith commented, so using miners, there's no repairs, but there's, there's no service station like Brunel, but they do sell fuel.
And, yeah, convenience.
Another example would be the, I call it the Shell Station. You can buy food there and other things inside that convenience store, but to my knowledge, they don't have a mechanic on duty. It's not, they just sell fuel. So as we get into those comments that you've all had a chance to read, we'll see there's, there was a perception by those people. And tell me if you disagree with me on this, that this, this is a good step forward, what we have written as a draft in, in front of us tonight, but it's not very clear that it would forbid a new miners grab and go to come in or a new Shell Station, I'll call it, which doesn't, it's not a service station. The commenters felt those would, would be able to do that in a new location.
Right.
And they, and they felt a strong tie to some of the safety problems with, it's the fuel dispensation, you know, the fuel, whether it's diesel or gasoline or a combination, they felt that should be prohibited and suggested some language.
Right. And I guess the follow-up question for you, Brian, is, you know, you've been, I mean, we all knew, you know, the whole, everything that went on with Mavericks. You've been in this process way back, you know, since it started, I wasn't on city council the first time this came around. But, you know, I, I guess, from all that background of working on this, what is, and, you know, considering the community's concerns, I mean, what is the, what do you feel is the intent of, you know, the types of businesses that we are trying to prohibit, particularly in the scenic zone? I know this covers other commercial and, you know, other zones, but, I mean, is it the fueling stations or is it sort of?
Really intended.
Definitely what's been going on with Mavericks, but, you know, like I said, there's a long history before this.
The intent is really, yeah, definitely the gas, the prototypical gas station truck stop style of fuel islands with a convenience store where they sell snacks and oil and lighter blades and that sort of thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I just, yeah.
So under this, they, someone could, a new convenience store, service station, as long as there's no fuel islands, right?
Right. It would be subject to a conditionally experiment in most, I think all of the zones, but, yeah.
So the, the store would be subject to, and then just be.
Or literally a dipper loop type of, but.
Yeah, oil change place. Yeah. But the, the fuel islands are the, kind of the, the key prohibition point on those.
That's what was confusing. I, is it anyone else? So did everyone read the comments that we received? From pretty, you know, pretty astute people in our community? They seemed to disagree with that. But they, they felt that the way this ordinance is written, prohibitions, that you could, that it didn't get at, if you had a convenience store, for example, that sold food and they wanted to add in the fuel pumps, that that would be allowed. Does it meet the definition of a service? So, okay, so I'm really glad to hear what the intent was, but we have some, I would call planning experts in our community and they sent us letters, written comments that had a different opinion on that. They didn't feel that those things would be excluded. It would only be people like Chevron, where they have a mechanic on duty and Brunel. Those would be the two examples. If they were future ones wanting to come in, they would be excluded. But the other ones that we talked about would not, that's their opinion. So is there anyone in the room that would like to comment tonight on this? Is there anyone that signed up? No one signed up, but is there anyone that came prepared that would like to offer their three minutes of this on this topic? Hey, hearing none.
I'll just add two cents worth, not three minutes.
Okay. Brian, we're going to give Lynn three minutes to talk on this topic.
Lynn Lewinsky, broken right. So I've been part of this for all the years that this has been going on and I went to the planning and zoning meetings that were working with this and I've asked a lot of questions because mostly, let's just put it out there, the Maverick seemed like a bad situation. And the explanation that I got for dividing this is that in our future, we may have electric pump battery charging stations, which would be different than having fuels. And it would be steps to the right, you know, forward presentations of conservation and et cetera. So service stations maybe is the word that throws that because maybe it is a non-gassing situation and they're selling candy bars and they have a little, who knows, hot dogs, whatever, on the side or t-shirts or who knows? That that would not prohibit people, business enterprises to be hooked into like an, an electric pumping station. That's the way it was presented to me. And I think some of the biggest concerns were having gas, fumes, et cetera, by eateries or the big, large toy vans being filled by big, large trucks and the noise, you know, all of that that goes on, which is appropriate for tourists and people going to snowmobile or camp or in our town, but not where we're also trying to have eateries and they're taking someone out for a breakfast coffee or whatever it is. And so I felt, I felt like it had been thought out pretty good. And maybe it's just some legal means or to how it makes it strengthened for concerns. So that's my two cents of it.
Thank you.
Mayor, we did have two people sign up online to speak virtually.
Correct.
We had Lisa Beck and Wayne Rumely both sign up virtually and I think Lisa is there now.
Great. Thank you, Bessie Jo. All right.
I'm here.
This is Mayor Bob and thanks for your written comments. Everyone's had a chance to review those and we're thoughtfully going through different people's perceptions and trying to get to the bottom of this. So thanks for joining us online. If you could state your name and address and then give us a quick three minute summary of, of what you think we need to do.
Yeah, so can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you for joining.
Thank you. I, I summarized it in the, in the written comments, so thank you for, thank you for referring to those. I think the language is a really good start and so just working through the intent, and I think that it was great that Councilwoman Thrower was bringing up what the intent is. And I just was worried about potential loopholes. And so if we could, if we could further that language, I think it would bolster, bolster the city code to be able to get more of what you guys are after. And so it was just, it was really a suggestion for guys to look at that. And so that's when I offered three potential points for you guys to consider fairly simply, I, I think, in, in those written comments there.
Thank you, Lisa. So everyone had a chance to read her letter, right? And they were very specific, I thought, helpful consideration. Is Mr. Rumely also online?
Yes, was that the extent for comments?
Say again.
Was she finished?
Yes.
Oh, okay, sorry about that. Yes, Mr. Rumely is also on.
Yes, can you hear me?
Wayne, we can hear you. Thanks for your written comments. If you could take three minutes to summarize your feelings and thoughts and suggestions, we appreciate hearing from you.
Okay, thank you very much. Wayne Rumely, 1008 Bitterroot Drive here in McCall. And I, I wrote my letter and sent that in earlier today. Just more, that, that's less the technical aspects of it and more just the description of why I'm, I'm, I'm really supporting you guys passing this. I think it's a great step in the right direction. I think if there's a way to get Lisa's very specific, you know, three bullet points incorporated as well, that would be even better. So I'll just be succinct and just say thank you again for, for, wanted to support you adopting this. Thank you.
Thanks, Wayne. Okay. So my confusion, perhaps you folks are more enlightened, but my confusion is when I read through what we have in writing, it doesn't get at those points that Lisa talked about or Wayne. And it seems like our council is interested in addressing that, the, the two examples I would use were the Shell Station. It's not a service station. It seems like it's unclear whether that would be a new one of those could come in or not. Same with the miners grab and go, that little convenience store. And we, we just heard from two people that wrote letters to us that said they didn't think those were excluded. It's not clear. So I was going to ask Brian and Bill to clarify that for us. I think you hear, you heard what our intent is and what Brian's intent was. Do we need to make some changes to the existing language to get at that intent? So I guess my question would be, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brian, if, if someone came in and wanted to establish something like the Shell Station in, along Highway 55, that would likely be in one of the commercial zones, correct? Okay, so what, what would that use be on the schedule of use control? What would that, what would that use be characterized?
We've done a few questions of what specific items are going to be selling in the convenience store portion, if it's going to include batteries and motor oil and more auto repair type goods than just snacks and retail items. But, yeah, it would either fall under service station if they are going to be selling the auto repair items with it or a convenience store, which we do have a separate definition for in 3.202. That, so, yeah, they would fall under one of those two categories.
Okay, but there's no convenience store listed in the commercial zone schedule of use control. I mean, that's not, not a use.
All items that do not fall or are not listed in the use chart for the zone to fall to a conditionally used permit.
Okay, so then what would happen?
So they would be, apply for a conditionally used permit and we would review it on its merits as a new conditionally used.
Okay, and then what would happen, though, if they proposed fuel islands with a C and P, but it's not a service station as such?
It would be eligible for a conditionally used permit. It would be unlikely to get support from staff because it's.
But it wouldn't be an outright.
Right. Yeah, it would not be an outright prohibition, that is.
Okay. What if someone wanted an outright prohibition? Would we need the language like what Lisa Beck and Wayne Rumely talked to us about? And is that something that's doable?
That's in, that's on page 135 in the packet. It says prohibited uses, the following uses are prohibited within the scenic route zone, service stations with gasoline or diesel fuel islands.
But it doesn't prohibit a convenience store with the gasoline, under my interpretation of the service station. So it doesn't prevent Mavericks from coming in. It didn't have a service station, that I know of, right?
But it couldn't include fuel islands. They could, no.
Station definition, my rating of service station definition is like a quick loop, a Brunel that may or may not sell stuff and may or may not have gas.
Yeah, and that's where the separate, like, the fuel islands are separate from that, so they could.
Yeah, but then when we go down to the tables where it says what you can and, or, you know, can have, cannot have, or it's a conditional use, there's, in some cases, it just says service stations. In some cases, it separates that service stations with or without gas. It doesn't deal with a convenience store with gas. Doesn't deal with gas and fueling stations separately, right? So, I mean, I think, I think, I, I would think that some clarification on this would be useful in terms of someone coming in to try and start a business down the scenic route or down these other zones. Because, I mean, if I was coming, I don't want to go through, you know, conditional use permit that, Brian. I mean, if I was coming, I don't want to go through, uh, you know, conditional use permit that Brian, right now says that staff probably isn't going to recommend approval. P and Z is probably not going to recommend approval. We are probably going to deny. I mean, if we're doing this, if we're willing to, you know, have something where we're denying uses, I think we need to be clear about what those uses are that we.
This is our chance to make a.
Having people go through this process that, you know, I mean, they may not know that we're not likely to approve something like that because they're coming from Utah or whatever, you know, and they don't have the history and background of what's been going on in this town.
Well, are you suggesting that then that we have, uh, a separate category for, um, convenience store? If we have it under the commercial, it shows, I mean, so we have that as a condition to use permit.
So it's in the residential use chart, convenience store is its own separate.
Okay. Just, and it's only in residential.
It's not listed in any of the others, therefore falls to conditional use.
I think the examples in, that we received in writing suggested that, you can't have, it, it used like fueling station, but it was very specific. Gasoline, diesel, stuff like that. That that's, that's the, the trigger, that that cannot be located. A new business that has fueling stations. Specifically diesel and gasoline cannot be located in the scenic corridor. That's the way I read Lisa Beck's letter and Wayne's letter. And I tend to agree with them. I think that would be more clear. So that we don't have people coming in from out of state going, well, can I get a conditional use permit? I'd like to have a convenience store and your scenic corridor. And it's going to be really nice. I'm going to have 20 fuel, you know, fuel pumps.
Or maybe they're just going to have fuel pumps and no convenience store. And it's going to be like a little, like one of those, you know, I don't know, Amazon started those little grocery stores where they're not manned at all, you know, and you just have.
Well, so then on page 135, the prohibited uses, uh, following use are prohibited in the scenic route zone, which is a lot of the nature of this. Service stations with gasoline or diesel fuel islands, then should that say, um, for lack of better language, any business with gasoline or diesel fuel islands?
Yeah. So what option would be to just straight service station with from that?
Any, yeah. So just gasoline or diesel fuel islands are prohibited in the scenic route zone. Does that solve it? The clarity?
I only concern with that is that it gets, it's very broad and there may be some valid reason I can't think of off the top of my head why we would want to allow a gasoline fueling island within a scenic route that is. So.
And I, I think.
Lynn actually brought up the one thing that I did have with the electric vehicle charging stations, which for all intents and purposes is a fueling station, electrical fuel.
And those wouldn't be included. I don't think council.
Well, I, I mean, I look into the, into the future and where we're, the general trajectory that we're going is electrification of vehicles. I mean, what if someone comes in and opens a convenience store with 20 charging stations?
Well, my question to you is, do you want that? Some of our citizens are writing letters saying we need that.
No.
And then maybe we need to address that, but that's a whole different issue because I mean, we've defined, you know, facilities intending to a fueling internal combustion automobiles, you know, gasoline and diesel. So I think, you know, as this is written, I would read it as someone coming in with a convenience store with a bunch of electric charging stations. Would go under the commercial use of a convenience store.
Or if someone came in and had just a parking lot full of EV charging stations. Well, maybe that it's capable for handling our future electric semi fleet.
I mean, we certainly.
Which case we want to address it at some point in time.
Yeah. I mean, like that's.
The other added point to the electric is, as it relates to code and so forth, is for instance, right now, does somebody need to, for instance, Shore Lodge has charging stations? I believe. So do, right now, if I have my real estate office and I have a charging station outside, am I going, not, which I don't, but, um, I've let people plug into, when I did the B and B, I let people plug in just to the regular outlet outside. But where it is, that opens up a big discussion about electric is like you have a, you can have a motel, you could have a full on service station type of thing, like you're talking about that could, but then you also have, um, other businesses that might want that convenience for people to plug in. Just like when you go to the big city and they've got them at Trader Joe's or Tosco or wherever.
But you know, those can be separated, I think, um, at, at one level in terms of you having a charging station that's part of your parking lot. You know, and it, that, that people, and I don't know how to phrase it, but you know, you know what I mean? Like you have one there, people park there to come to your business and they are able to charge there. Versus something where, I mean, I don't know, in the future, if you have a parking lot full of, uh, charging stations that a private person sets up, they would presumably charge for it. I mean, right now, you know, it's like the library wants to put one in. You know, we want to have them around town. And, and I'm not saying that we don't need to address those, but I think those can be.
Because the charging station implies that someone is there for a longer period of time.
They're there for your business and they happen to park there and because of the convenience of, okay, I can plug my car in. But they're not there solely to refuel their car.
I guess that's the question like Colby on that is like, if we're talking about refueling, like it, it's not feasible at this day and age that someone could bring a diesel truck in and have it refueled in, in minutes.
Correct.
And down the road someday, that might be the case.
Say, I mean, you know, for instance, if there was a, a parcel large enough somewhere, anywhere in all the scenic route, you know, especially close to the downtown core would be pretty appealing to, to establish an electric fueling station.
Park, go shop, go out to dinner.
Yeah.
But at the same time, I mean, think about doing that where Mavericks was going to be, right? And just having a bunch of, a parking lot basically there. That's not really visually pleasing. Although I totally support getting EV charging stations around town, but it isn't visually pleasing. And I mean, there could be concerns about traffic.
So when we, when we sent this to our staff, they brought us a good proposal two years ago and we, you know, stumbled a little bit on this. We gave them direction. They brought back some better direction that I think our community supports. And it's based on other resort communities that have dealt with, petroleum, I'll call it fossil fuels, diesel and gasoline. And so that's where we're at. Do you think maybe an incremental approach would be, let's not try to think too far ahead and go, yeah, we don't want any EV stations or we do want EV stations. Let that be a gray area where people can apply and go through the permitting process and not ban that right now. Cause other resort communities that we've been interested in, they're not, they're not banning electrical hookups in the scenic.
I guess the question is, and, and I agree, I think we should leave that bit of it for now and just deal with the gas part of it. Except that, um, you know, if someone, I mean, trying to figure out what commercial use they would fit under and whether we would have the opportunity to actually review that. And, and whether it's appropriate in the location they're proposing it, depending on what it is and, you know, whether it's a parking lot full of EV charging stations or, or, you know, something a little less, um, you know, paved or, or something like that. But, you know, I, I'm wondering if that's something that we should be thinking about and, and trying to grant an application coming in.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, I'm, all of these things are appropriate for you to consider, but it's not the topic that's in front of you today. Which is this particular ordinance. And I think the thing that's in front of you and the issue is whether you want to take this particular ordinance and adopt it now in its present form. Or I would, I would suggest to you that a change to, to do a broad prohibition, while that may be appropriate, is a, is a pretty big change to this draft ordinance. It's worked its way through the process. That would appropriately require a remand to P and Z through that process. That's one choice that you have. Another choice is to go ahead and adopt this particular ordinance and have your staff go through and, and bring back the trailer, if you will, to, to bring to you a solution to the broader picture. Because I can see the issues that have been raised by Ms. Beck and Mr. Rumally with regard to a convenience store. What about the, the lease and rental supply place? What if they were to establish a fuel island? I, I've represented some convenience store owners in the past and and the money was not in the fuel. The money was in the candy bars and the stuff and so forth inside the convenience store. That's, and that was far and away, uh, more profitable than the, the money from the fuel itself. Fuel might have got them to stop, but the money was made inside the retail, uh, center. But, but the fuel was what got them to stop. So, um, that's, so the concern about fuel as a, an attractor, attractive nuisance, maybe, for another type of business might be appropriate. So those are your, really kind of your choices tonight. You could, um, remand this back for additional work. I, I think if you were to amend that section to say all fuel islands are prohibited within the scenic route, I think that's a pretty broad change versus what was presented to the public and the P and Z commission. You can ask your staff, but I think that that's a little bit beyond what we typically would see in terms of the type of adjustment that gets made at the council.
And Bill, if, if you're saying that we could adopt this, but then send it, not send it back, but, but have a trailer, as you put it, to P and Z. That would be, but the intent of that would really be to leave this service station definition as is and not to adopt it. So we have something on the books, but then redo it.
Then we bring through a new, some new definitions, some new provisions, a new ordinance. That really is more robust, but at least we've addressed the service station piece that gives your staff something, gives them some pegs to hang a hat on. If somebody does come forth with something that's more typical to what they see.
Well, so if we adopt it as is, if I'm hearing you correctly, if we adopt it as is, service stations with gasoline or diesel fuel islands and the definition of service station is prohibited, prohibited in the scenic route, basically from city limits right through town. So if somebody on some parcel wanted to build a very large gas station convenience store in this, more or less the center of our town, that would prohibit that from happening at this point in time.
Yeah. And it's part of your, quote, legislative history. If you make it clear that kinds of things that people typically get at a typical fueling station type thing. There's windshield washer fluid, there's motor oil, there's antifreeze. There's the kinds of things that get stocked, wiper blades.
You buy some of that stuff in other stores as well.
But also the snowbrushes, the kinds of things that folks typically buy that are get stocked. And they walk in and, and get those things here. That has a, feed your quarters into it so you can air up your tires. All of those kinds of things. It's the typical kinds of thing that you do. That you're not going to find at the corner store where you just go to buy your, your candy bar. I mean, it gives your staff something to use now that they can come forth with some things to address the issues.
And then we could look at the broader discussion like Colby brought up of electric, right? Things like that. And we could look towards refining something that might encompass.
Whole areas is evolving. How long does it take to charge an electric vehicle? And you know, the little Chevy Voe versus the, the big electric semi tractor that, that they, you know, some of these larger, I mean, how long does it take to charge one? I, I have no idea.
Depends.
More than five minutes.
I have one other thing. I think the, I'll, I'll leave the, the EV thing be. But within the, the scenic route, my concern is that if someone wants to put a gas station in, it won't be within city limits or in the impact area. It's going to be out somewhere in between here and Lake Forge. And what does that do to, you know, that lake, that whole corridor there, it's going to continue to add to the clutter that's already happening out there because it's more or less unregulated in the county. And so that's a concern for me. That we're going to, why, I'm just going to put a gas station on top of our, the, the aquifer with a big septic tank that shoots more crap into the river already. You know, like, I, I don't, I don't know. I'm a little concerned about the outright prohibition of gas stations or service stations within the city because I mean, this, I guess if they're more than 150 feet off the road, they could do it, but.
Yeah, that can be.
And we already have quite a few. None of them are going to go away because if, like if the Maverick, for instance, went and moved to the new facility, the other one is leased.
Yeah.
So what's that owner of that property going to do if they move? They're going to lease it to another gas station. So we already have a lot.
Yeah.
But I mean, I think there's a lot of people in the community that would probably rather see a large one outside of city limits or outside of the impact area than within the downtown core. That seems to be something that we've heard.
Fortunately, I mean, I'll just have to go through the process with the county planning and zoning and county commissioner.
And whether, yeah, and whether it's financially feasible for some entity to do such a thing as well. That's a whole other subject, but not our.
I think Colby's point is really a good one. And when we prohibit this location, it means where else? When we think 20 years down the road, and there's doubled amount of things, uh, where will they locate? So, so I think to our, uh, legal council's recommendation, that's really important to us, but it's, uh, for, for this purposes, we got to think, um, what is in the ordinance. I, I think it gives the city the capacity to, um, locate or prohibit the businesses. And, and I also think, I'd ask Brian Parker, I think the words from the two people who recommended is a clarification and we should go through that clarification, but you're the one who knows best what clarification means. So if you think those are, and I think we're ready to, we could be to move on maybe where, where we are on this. But to me is if you think that clarification, clarification gives you a, a greater capacity to, make decisions, then I would propose we add that clarification into the ordinance.
And then is the scenic route, I'm not looking at the map, I forget offhand, is the scenic route include the impact area?
If the county commissioners vote to adopt the same ordinance.
So right now this ordinance is only city limits, not impact area.
There's also, uh, commercial and industrial properties on Duthen Hard on both sides of 55 and Cron Lane east of 55.
Also, commercial and industrial properties on Dine Hard on both sides of 55 and Cron Lane east of 55.
So we see we wouldn't be so Kobe, we wouldn't be pushing it necessarily in the long run, all the way out south by the water sports. Just south of city limits, not the impact area. And then on this side, it goes to. City limits goes to Bear Basin Road. Or the Brendan Lake County Road. So, but nobody's going to build a gas station out there.
Yet.
Tricky one, but I guess maybe, I don't know.
Just one other for thinking about future clarifications is, you know, and and we talked about this convenience stores, gas pumps. And the reason I don't think this definition covers that is because it talks about, you know, a place that sells snacks and stuff incidental to the principal business. And so, I mean, I think when we're looking at future clarifications of this definition, you should sort of think of all these different options that there are. And what and maybe Bill can enlighten us and how, you know. If if how how do we determine what is incidental to a business? I mean, is it normally, is there any legal basis to consider like, I mean, because it's a future business, so we don't have sales. Like, what is what does it mean incidental? Like, if somebody came and said, well, you know, and. You know, I've I've got a convenience store with gas pumps, but yeah, the convenience store is incidental to to this. But you're telling me that really profit wise, it's not, you know. So I don't know if there's a better way to if we're going to use some language like that incidental to a principal. Business, you know, if there's a better way to to. Phrase that and I'm, you know, I'm not saying we need to figure that out, but just something to think about.
Okay, I took a quick restroom break, but I think I'm catching up. Let me, let me look at my little guide. I think we're ready to close the public hearing. We've had, we've had robust discussion in all the comments, Brian's rebutted some of that or or talked about how those comments fit in. Our legal counsel, Bill, has given us options. So I would suggest that we formally close the public hearing. And then deliberate on the three options and I'll I'll call on you and ask you, which of those three options do you think we should make a motion on?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right. May I have a roll call vote on that motion to close the public hearing?
Councilmember Thrower?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nielsen?
Yes.
Mayor Giles?
Yes.
Councilmember Menjesic?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. I'm going to start with you, Julie. What which of the three items do you think has merit to consider for tonight? Based on listening to Brian and Bill?
I I think I would like to see us adopt this ordinance so we have something with the. Understanding that we're going to continue to revise this, strengthen the, or at least clarify the the definition and make sure that. We're all comfortable and it's clear to the public that if the intent is to to prohibit. Gasoline fueling stations on the scenic route and these other, you know, like the neighborhood commercial zones and that kind of thing that, you know, we work on making that really clear. Yeah.
Lyle, same opinion, though I think the clarifications that's been pointed out to us might make it, we could do it this time and get that done. My approval is subject to adding the clarification given to us by the two people. That's where I am.
Is that a option, Bill? Yeah, Mr. Mayor. So Councilman Nelson explained that last part to me, he say add the clarification. What do you mean by that and when, when?
Oh, okay, thank you. The three points that Lisa Beck included in her letter.
Okay. So when do you want that clarification added? Do you want it now? Do you want it later in a subsequent, like I I suggested a trailer type of a follow up ordinance to add? Or when do you propose that?
I'm proposing that if Brian thinks it's additional clarification that helps. Enforce the intent that we've if we've discussed that we could add it now. And if it brings a recycle that I'm with Councilmember Thrower and we just prove it as is.
Okay, so, Mr. Mayor, well, Councilman Nelson, what? In looking at the the email. What the proposal is, is to actually change the ordinance. Because what I'm looking at says to add language. To. To prohibit. Fuel islands in the scenic route specifically. To add convenience store to the list of commercial uses. In the commercial use zone, that's the schedule of use control table. That hasn't been part of the ordinance, that's not in the ordinance now. So that's not been what's out there, it hasn't been discussed at the Planning and Zoning Commission or seen by anybody before today. Add vehicle fuel sales to the list of uses by zone. And so that's not even a defined term, you know, is it?
In this code amendment.
Code amendment.
Gasoline and diesel fueling islands, assuming the comment was.
So so again, it's it's something that would be added to, it's not something that's. There now.
Be part of our rewrite for the second goal.
Yeah, so I think it's something to, so in other words, you clean it up in a in a second. Ordinance or subsequent ordinance that goes through the P and Z and so forth. And then then gets done, it's not. It's not something that we. Have on printed out and we write in tonight. So that's legal, if that's where the council wants to head ultimately, you've given us a path that's legally defensible. So procedure is correct, goes back to planning and zoning, ask for. The language to be added to a separate trailer bill, how are we define that? And then that's brought back after planning and zoning deliberates as their hearing, and it's brought back to us, is that correct? Yeah, so that's that would be a new where where additions are made to. Just like this bill or this order. I have legislated.
Yeah, this the way this ordinance went through that process.
This one adds to your code, there would be another ordinance that would add.
Yeah, then I rescind what I just said and I'm in favor of proven the way it is or not.
So I I would go with the same thing, I think that at least at this point in time, the definition of service station does include. Convenience store, what it says additionally sells cold drinks, packaged foods, tobacco, similar convenience, et cetera. I feel like we have something that's good. To numerous people's points, we can make it better, so I am on board with. Approving this as it is and with the the intent that we are going to. Dial in some of the other things and look a little further out in the future and try to. Put it, so prove it and then separately. I think we're probably giving direction to staff to come back in the future with a more broader one or having a. You know, having a workshop on a Friday morning type of thing to really hash out a lot more at some point in time in the not too distant future, something to that effect, so. Yes, approve, yes, work towards the future.
And that's where I'm at, too, I favor that alternative. Will be.
Yeah, I'm right there with you, I guess the one clarification is that. If we adopt this, someone could still. Apply to to open a convenience store or a service station sans fuel pumps like that could, that is still a possibility.
And as far as the service station, Colby, it still would need a conditional use permit.
Yeah, for sure.
Opportunity to review that.
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, so, no, thank you guys for answering the questions, I'm over here just kind of lobbing things at you. I'm on board with what. With everyone else, I think that it's important to to get this through and then I think it buys us some time to tighten some stuff up and I don't think. Don't see any downside to it at this point.
So Bill, under the recommended action on the agenda bill. We held the public hearing, did a good job with that. And then it has two other items, suspend the rules read by title only, and then adopt the ordinance. Is there anything else we would need to do tonight to make this process work? With this option that you gave us? No, I, Mr. Mayor, I don't think so, any staff clearly knows that there's follow up work to be done. I mean, I don't think you need to formally direct them to do that thing. Okay. It's on it's on there to do. What is the ordinance number?
One zero one five.
One zero one five, 1015, okay. So the recommended action is to suspend the rules, read by title only, one time only, ordinance number 015. Made that motion, is there a second? Julie second it. Motion has been made and seconded to suspend the rules, read by title only, one time only, ordinance 1015. May I have a roll call vote on that motion?
I apologize, I did not capture who.
So I didn't.
Uh, Councilmember Menjesic?
Yes.
Councilmember Thrower?
Yes.
Mayor Giles?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nielsen?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries, so we're going to ask. Bessie Jo Wagner, City Clerk, to read by title only, one time only, ordinance. 1015.
Ordinance number 1015, an ordinance of the city of McCall, Valley County, Idaho, amending Title III, Chapter II definitions. To provide definitions for amended and new terms, amending Title III, Chapter III, residential zones and standards modifying permitted administratively. Approvable, conditional and prohibited uses in residential zones. Amending Title III, Chapter IV, commercial zones and standards modifying permitted administratively approvable, conditional. And prohibited uses in commercial zones, amending Title III, Chapter V, industrial and business park zones and standards. Modifying permitted administratively approvable, conditional and prohibited uses in industrial and business park zones. Amending Title III, Chapter VI, civic airport and agricultural forest zones modifying permitted administratively approvable, conditional and prohibited uses in civic airport and agricultural. Agricultural forest zones, amending Title III, Chapter VII, special districts adding a new chapter of prohibited uses within scenic route overlay zones.
Thank you, Bessie Jo, so our third item on the agenda bill is to adopt this ordinance. And again, it's number 1015.
I'll make the motion to adopt ordinance 1015. Code Amendment CA dash 22 dash 03 to amend Title amend Title III, approve the summary for publication and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
Second.
All right. Mike made the motion, Colby, the first person to second it. A motion has been made and seconded to adopt ordinance number 1015, code amendment CA dash 22 dash 03. To amend Title III, approve the summary for publication and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents. May I have a roll call vote on this motion?
Councilmember Menjesic?
Yes.
Councilmember Nielsen?
Yes.
Mayor Giles?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Thrower?
Thank you, Council, that motion carries, so before we exit this topic. Wayne and Lisa, thank you for joining us tonight and thank you for submitting comments. We will follow up and I think Mike characterized it pretty well that we. You know, we may do it in a work session, we're going to follow the process, legal counsel told us to where it goes back to planning and zoning for a separate. Ordinance. And it's clear where we're leaning, where our direction has been to staff, so thank you for your patience, staff. Is Michelle online tonight?
Uh, no, she's not.
Would you please let her know the outcome of tonight and that we appreciate her patience because I remember when she brought it to us several years ago. That we're making progress incrementally and. But more importantly, we're following the process, considering all public input and making better decisions that way. Bill, thank you for your guidance tonight. All right, we'll go on to our next public hearing.
Are you expecting a rowdy group, is that why you have the new hammer here?
Yeah. A new hammer, all right, so. No, I'm not. Conditional use permit, this is agenda bill. 21 dash 03, okay, we're we're, this is a request to approve conditional use permit, CUP 21 dash 03. This is at Juan 11 North Sampson Trail, it's for the McCall Donley School District. And the purpose of this hearing is to consider this request to approve the conditional use permit at that location. The agenda bill number is 23 dash 066. I will ask for a motion to open the public hearing on this topic.
I move you open the public hearing on the McCall Middle School Expansion Project.
Thank you, Lyle, is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Mike. All in favor of, a motion has been made and seconded, all in favor of opening the public hearing on the McCall Middle School. At Sampson Trail, approval of conditional use permit, please say aye. Hearing no opposition, the public hearing is formally opened. And. Okay, I might need a little help, Brian, on this, but I'm going to ask you as as staff to start with an overview of the application. And then let us know who from the applicant side will be speaking to us next.
Thank you, yes, Mayor Giles, Brian Parker, City Player, I also have Nathan Stewart, Public Works Director, and Aaron Baker of Horace Engineers, who is our traffic engineering consultant. On the line to assist me. This application is to expand the Payette Lakes Middle School by approximately 12,000 square feet. To facilitate the addition of 125 students to the total capacity of school. Making it able to hold 525 students in addition to the 400 at Barbara Morgan Elementary School for a total of 975 students. On the property. Upgrading the landscaping and grading the playground area. The southeast of the middle school. And then modifying the circulation plan to. Improve some of the queuing issues that are on site, realigning the access driveway to Barbara Morgan. Expanding pickup and drop off area at Payette Lakes Middle School, redesigning the bicycle and pedestrian path pathway network for a more direct connection. Up the hill to both schools and then reconfiguring traffic circulation. To improve queue. So on its face, this application is fairly straightforward, the history is where things get complicated, so I'll go into that in a little bit more detail. Starting with the original approval of a conditional use permit in 1984 for the middle school itself. The approval was just for the middle school, didn't it include any possible inclusion of a middle school or the elementary school in the future? In that there was a condition of approval to dedicate the southernmost 35 feet of the track for. Public to the public for Dine Hard Lane at such time as Dine Hard Lane is proposed to be extended to the east of the subject property. But is not precluded thereby from using the same site for access. But is not precluded thereby from using the same site for access road construction, no cities, no plowing of this or any other on-site road should be anticipated. So then, that required them to dedicate thirty-five feet that would theoretically be the centerline of Dine Hard Lane. Upon development of the parcel to the south of the school site, which is now the Fox Ridge subdivision, which came to. Be approved in two thousand and four, there was a robust discussion at that time with the Transportation Advisory Committee, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the City Council. On whether that was appropriate or feasible to do so, they determined at that time that it was not. Something they were interested in pursuing, and so there was the requirement to dedicate the other thirty-five feet on the Fox Ridge side was stricken at that time. And then, two thousand and seven, the conditional use permit for the elementary school was approved. At that time, it was evident that there were known traffic. Issues with the school and there was a condition of approval specifically saying that the city has the authority to review traffic. Conflicts and issues and every five years and take remedial action as necessary. As a result of all of this, there developed a lot of. Issues because it has been kind of developed in a piecemeal manner. There's definitely queuing problems that are evident. From vehicles backing down the private drive aisle. Now the pedestrian bicycle network is very circuitous and requires a lot of out-of-the-way travel to reach the intended destination. So, as a result of all of this, staff's recommendation is to require a dedication of seventy-foot easement. To allow for future exploration of the feasibility and appropriateness of a roadway and pedestrian pathway system alongside property. This has some opportunities, I think, to improve conditions at the school. Takes a lot of maintenance burden off of them because then the city, as a public roadway, would then be responsible for plowing and maintaining that section of road. The, and also facilitates appropriately designed future roadway system for development to the south and the east of the school site. That has been designated as an area of critical concern, as a place that is anticipated to be developed in the near future, in a large development. I will turn it over to Nathan to explain this all a little bit more thoroughly.
Good evening, City Council, Nathan Stewart, Public Works Director and City Engineer. I have tonight also Aaron Baker from Horrocks Engineers, that he led the study that was completed. By Horrocks on looking at the southeast corridor of our town. On a global picture of, of transportation routes, anticipated growth and future transportation facility needs. So, I think we have two objectives tonight. One is to explain how this application got to this point, it's kind of a unique situation. And I think that will be my role, the second thing I'd like to do is have Aaron present to you. A general overview of that study, you have not seen that study, you will be fully debriefed on that study at a work session at a later date this spring. But it's pertinent to, to this discussion because the planning and zoning specifically required or requested that we. Brief them as well on the findings of that study, so. I'll begin first and then I'll pass it off to Aaron. So when this land use application was presented to us. It came at a time when the city was, at the same time, being approached. Prelimarily by developers in the area with a lot of different concepts on Dine Hard to the west of Sampson Trail. As well as further east of the school. And as staff reviewed the history of Dine Hard Lane and the discussions that had occurred throughout the decades with the City Council. On the permitting of Fox Ridge subdivision, as well as the school's CUP. Became very apparent that previous planning efforts, the community's vision. Anticipated that the Dine Hard Lane would extend further east. From Sampson Trail, that was. Somewhat formalized in the requirement that the school district provide a thirty-five-foot easement for a future road, however. I don't know the specific date, but when the City Council contemplated approving the Fox Ridge subdivision. There was a variety of testimony that suggested that that was infeasible. But there was no real factual information that staff could find on why that was infeasible. And certainly, from a planning perspective, a community development perspective, there were easily identified potential benefits. So, that was kind of a red flag from the staff standpoint of like, well, why didn't this happen? And, at the same time, having, you know, being fully aware of, of the undeveloped land to the east of the school area and the existing road network. We contemplated a proposal to, to the school district that said, hey, you know, you have a variety of different improvements here. That you're proposing to do on your campus, you have a known traffic congestion issue on the campus. We all want to work together to try to solve that. And, the financial responsibilities of those improvements are significant as well. And so, the idea came up that, well, why don't we try to acquire a sufficient easement that would allow for. A properly constructed collector roadway that could potentially help improve vehicular access to the school campus. While still mitigating traffic congestion, help improve multimodal facility. Construction and multimodal access bikers and walkers to both, both schools. And, and in effect, potentially allow future development to bear the burden of those financial costs. Because nobody in this application. Had spent the time to prove that a road could or could not be built. That a road would or would not provide these benefits. And it seems. Almost indirectly proportionate to the school district's proposal that they would be required to construct such a road. So, staff contemplated and requested that the applicant consider this, this easement. And we were in the interim phases of reviewing their engineering design, they did do a traffic impact study. That identified that additional traffic impacts to the Sampson Trail, Dine Hard intersection would be occurring during the peak hours. And we would need to identify how they would need to mitigate that. Staff's proposal was that. That if the applicant provided the easement, that their requirements to mitigate those would not be required because that would be a significant ask. And that we would recognize that future development would have probably an equal or much greater impact on that intersection. And that future development could bear the burden of those improvements. So, we, both the applicant's engineering team and the city kind of went on pause for about a year to a year and a half. And during such time, the city hired Horrocks to do a larger corridor study. Because it was very apparent that we didn't have a lot of good data, that we were. We were concerned about the data that was being presented by the school. And we wanted to become more educated at the staff level on, on what is the need for the community regardless of. A rather small expansion to the school. And with, with respect to all of the development in that area. And so I think this is a good time to pass it off to Aaron, and Aaron, if you're available, looks like you're on. I, I'd like you to kind of discuss with the council what your study was aimed at accomplishing. And how this Dine Hard Lane was evaluated.
Okay, thank you, Nathan, appreciate the, the introduction. And thank you, Mr. Mayor and the, and the council for the opportunity to, to speak with you. I'm Aaron Baker with Horrocks Engineers. Horrocks Engineers, as Nathan has just stated, has been working with Nathan and, and Brian and, and Morgan to evaluate the transportation system in, in this southeast section of McCall. And this is essentially in the vicinity of the school and the school is kind of at the heart of, 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 of a lot of the transportation issues that we find in this area of the city. To do this study, what we did is we prepared a traffic model. That, that didn't cover the entire city, but again, just the southwest, or I'm sorry, the southeast corner of the city. And it really had, the purpose had, was, was twofold. It, it was really to evaluate the traffic capacity of the existing transportation system. And also to look at the future capacity of the transportation system as, as development. Is to, is looking ahead and, and as the, the area develops and. The. In the model, there was kind of special attention that was given to Dine Hard Lane and Sampson Trail. And. And I don't think it was a coincidence that Nathan asked us to, to kind of take a lot of attention at this because we knew the, the school district had this important. Expansion that they were planning and also the, the, the traffic needed to be addressed at this time. And really what the model did is it, it helped answer the question, what is the need of Dine Hard Lane if it is, if it is extended to the east? And also, what is the need of connecting other roadways to help with Sampson Trail and Dine Hard Lane? And we'll have an opportunity to talk in the future to kind of explain a little bit more detail about the model and some other. Mitigations that can happen in the area. So we'll, we'll talk about that at a future time. But with regard to the CUP application to expand the school being in the forefront. And looking for guidance with regard to, to, to Dine Hard Lane. The model looked at the, the, the school's impact on, on this intersection. And what we found was. Dine Hard Lane would help to solve some future issues. And specifically, it would improve access to the school. Right now, with the, with the lane that's being used and the queuing that happens on, on that, that, that extension of, or just the, the driveway portion of. That, that goes out onto the school district's property is, is inadequate. And with expanding and, and having more students in this area, the Dine Hard Lane extension would help to improve that, that access for the schools. Something else that we found that was, that was important to know is that Dine Hard, because of the type of road that it is, being a, a major collector. Arterial type of a street, it's anticipated that this road would, would gather some of the, the future growth and future development. And the expansion of the school, it was anticipated that this road would be able to accept this traffic. So as, as this area in the school expands and the developed area around the school were to continue to increase. We were anticipating in the model that about fifty percent of all that traffic that would be, that would be new traffic in that area would use Dine Hard Lane. And if Dine Hard wasn't there, the, where that traffic would go is, it would, there would be other smaller streets, local streets. That this development would then connect to, such as Woodlands Drive and Sheila Lane and Stockton Drive. And Fox Ridge Road, and these roads, even though you'd be spreading it out amongst all these, all these neighborhoods. If, these roads really aren't intended for that, that type of, of traffic that we're expecting with this development. In the residential development in the future, but also school traffic. So that we, we did find that, that Dine Hard Lane was important to, to, to expand to the east. And Dine Hard Lane and Sampson Trail, they are, we already. Have delay issues occurring in, at that intersection, but also on those segments of roads. So if there's already concerns today, then as, as development occurs, for sure, we would need to, to look at and address. Improving those, that intersection in those segments. And. Having the traffic concentrate itself more on Dine Hard Lane will create more congestion at Dine Hard and Sampson Trail. And that's to be expected, and so in, in the future, there, there, and really two things need to be examined there and that would be a future traffic signal at some point. But also geometrically, it's not in a very advantageous position, it's, it's offset. And there's, there's trails that, that are there that, that are kind of in the way of a future road reconfiguration. So there's quite a bit of, of correction that could happen there that would improve the, the operation of that intersection. So with those two things, needing to be done at Dine Hard and Sampson. Ignoring those for very much longer, especially with an expansion of a school, could be, could, could make it difficult for the city to try to, to keep up with, with traffic congestion at that intersection.
Nathan, you're on mute, this is Mayor Bob.
Thanks, Mayor Bob, I'm sure you have a ton of questions, I, I just wanted to follow with Aaron that. We did look at the intersections and certainly turn lanes that don't exist today, that can separate some of the turning movements in addition to signalization. Were what, were things that seemed necessary and essential to any future road and that would be constructed there. Secondly, the idea that. You know, we, we want to make sure that, that, that we're building for the future, that we. Recognize and understand that McCall is going to grow and without having the opportunity to extend Dine Hard Lane to the, to the east of the school property. Compromises the benefits and the opportunities. That, that it would provide, there would be additional cost to the existing communities. And also interesting burdens on future development because they would be having to. You know, balance not having that option. And one of the things that's important to recognize too is that. You know, traffic volumes are relative, so, you know, there were a lot of comments and concerns that we'd be creating this massive street. That, that goes right up against the school and that that's a bad thing. And, and there's definitely some concerns there, and so, a- as the city engineer, I certainly wouldn't want to be creating or recommending a dangerous situation. For anybody, let alone our, our, our school kids, so. Those aspects have to still be vetted, they just have not been vetted. And so it's, it's certainly not clear to staff that it will be or will not be safe. It's still not clear to staff that it will be or won't be. Improve or, or not, the, the existing congestion, congestion that's there. So, we're, we're just asking to create that opportunity and I think future development can, can vet that out and that burden may not be, need to be placed on the school district. And certainly, wanting to make sure that efficient transportation to the school exists. So, if, if kids are walking to school, they're not walking to school on busy local roads. That don't have separated pathways or sidewalks because I don't think it's realistic to assume that those things can be constructed on Woodlands or Fox Ridge or, or Stockton. And so we have this opportunity, I just, that, that's really where staff was coming from, is like, let, let's secure the easement, let's go through this. The city has no intentions of building this road, but future development may, and it can be vetted at that time.
So let's pause right there, before we get into a lot of spin-out, I call it, in the very detailed questions. Nathan and Aaron, I want you to be on standby, please. And then, Brian, I wanted to ask you a very big picture question, let's, all, all of us on council, look at your screens or hard copies of the agenda bill. And here's my big picture question, the conditional use permit that is before us tonight, that is the topic. The decision is to be made on CUP twenty-one dash zero three for the McCall Donnelly School District. It's been reviewed by the McCall Area Planning and Zoning Commission and approved and recommended that we approve it. So that's a fact, correct?
Yes.
All right, and then. And then, Nathan, you made some really good points, as did Brian, about the history and about how we got to where we are today and talked about things such as easements and possibilities for the future to make things better. So it's my understanding in reviewing this, and I asked these very same questions today when I got my briefing from Annette, as I always do at 3 o'clock before a city council meeting. And it's our understanding, Annette and I, that what you have brought before us is a big step forward in giving us options to make things better. Those are my words. But more importantly than that, I learned that that I believe the three of you, Brian, Nathan, and Aaron, have had some very, very good discussions with the school district and their representatives and have discussed this, why we need that 70-foot right-of-way, for example. And you discussed a lot of other things such as traffic flow. Is that correct? And it was characterized to me that those discussions went really well, that, you know, it was really helpful. So that's how we got to tonight. So before we spin off into a lot of questions for all of you, the three of you, our next part is we're supposed to hear from the applicant. And I believe there's a bunch of people here representing the applicant, McCall Donnelly School District. So would you introduce them? And we'd love to hear from them.
Yes, we have Bill Hamlin of Design West Architects to present for our bath.
Bill, welcome. If you could, please address us and state your name for their record and your address, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thanks for having me here tonight. City Council, thanks for allowing me some time. My name's Bill Hamlin, Design West Architects, address 216 Southwest Fifth Avenue in Meridian Out.
Thank you.
So I wanted to start off by basically saying we're we have several people here tonight to talk to you. We want to help clarify the picture from our perspective. And so I'm available to you tonight in in person here to answer some questions. Superintendent Pingrae is here. Also, Jason Clay, Director of Operations for the school district, as well as we have our traffic engineer, Joe Barton, from Paragon Consulting, is is here remote again. So with that said, I just kind of like to start to paint the picture from the school district's perspective. Obviously, kids are showing up, growth is happening, and this is a project that helps deal with some of that growth. It's immediate. And then there's projection of where it's going to go over time. So we don't necessarily have the luxury of waiting two, three, five years to say on some of these what ifs. We are trying to get timely approval of the project. What we're going to do tonight is talk about some of the conditions that were placed on the recommendation for approval. And we're going to ask for your approval unless some of those conditions are modifying some of those conditions.
Could you say that again?
So we're going to we're going to request your approval of the project with some of the recommended conditions that came from planning, zoning, and stat. We're going to want modifications on what their recommendations were. So we're going to ask you to eliminate some of those requirements and modify some of those requirements. Those include conditions 2, 3, 4, 6, 7. And so we would like to go through those one at a time. Part of what we're going to do is try to paint some things in the perspective of what's reasonable for the school. And then we're also going to try to quantify some things and apply them to traffic standards. So you know when certain growth on the school site would trigger certain improvements that are that are calculated through the engineer, traffic engineer, we'll have him speak to those so that we can understand are there tipping points of when certain things have to happen. The other thing we're trying to do is to go forward in a way where we have when we can affect things that are under our control. We have a school site. There are certain things we can do design-wise and engineering-wise onsite in some of the traffic issues while still controlling the school, controlling their own site. We believe that as presented, the project does not warrant construction of the road that's being discussed. We don't know whether it will fit in the right of way, and there'll be a further request for a bigger right of way later, as we're looking at now. Some decisions were already made in the past that are already already affecting us now by asking for additional 35 feet closer to the school in the area where the school is being expanded. And that expansion is based on efficiency of the school itself, view lines, things like that. And I can get into more of that later. But I think the appropriate place to start would be to have Joe Barton from Paragon Consulting, engineer, go ahead and and speak to this to this issue and start to clarify for you some of the traffic requirements, some of the onsite movement requirements, and even to the extent of maybe discussing some bike paths, things like that. So I'd like to have Joe start to speak to those major issues.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As Bill said, I'm Joe Barton, Paragon Consulting, 157 West Fourth Street in Kuna. And I guess I'd like to just go over some of the the traffic studies that have been done. There's three different traffic type studies in your packet, two of which my company, Paragon, prepared, and then the HROX study, at least in draft form, that Nathan and Aaron have have described. And I'd like to start kind of at the beginning. Our first traffic-related study, if you want to call it that, was actually done before the school district had a bond, before the school district had at least started down the path of expanding the middle school. And it was done in 2019. It's called Traffic Flow Analysis. And the school district came to us recognizing queuing issues at the school and said, you know, what can we do internal to our to our campus that might help these situations? Understanding that queuing on campus is probably still going to be happening, but working towards options that will keep that queuing on campus and not spilling on to the public roadway system. Obviously, traffic is using the public roadway system to get there, but we would like them to get on campus before that that queuing and that backup impacts the public side. So that, like I said, that was done in 2019. That particular study was not directly related to the middle school expansion. It was more campus-wide. It had some ideas and concepts up near the elementary school as well. But it was independent in the head of the current application. Then, as the current application came forward and we began looking at the traffic, we actually, in 2021, prepared the second traffic-related study, which was the Traffic Impact Study, that was directly related to the proposed middle school expansion. And that traffic study looked, it used some of the elements of the prior traffic flow circulation study that we had done and used some of those elements along with some additional recommendations based on the traffic counts that we collected, the traffic projections that we had done, including additional traffic that the school would have the potential of developing with the higher student capacity of ability. And additional, I think we added additional 25% of just general traffic growth to those studies to look at that. And what we found in the 2021 study, and I'm going to relate these to a couple of the the conditions of approval that Bill referenced as we go through here. But the the 2021 study, what we found was the current school capacity before expansion is 850 students for the entire campus with both elementary and the middle school. And we found that the public roadway intersection, Sampson Trail roadway could operate and function acceptably up to that limit. And then, once campus capacity started to reach that 850-student level and go beyond that, Bill or maybe Brian had indicated the proposed expansion would bring that to another 125 students, five classrooms. So once it exceeded that 850 student population, then it appeared that some additional improvements would be necessary for the intersection of Dine Hard and Sampson Trail, and then some frontage improvements, additional lane improvements along Sampson. And so just to give you a little bit of reference as to the current student enrollment, there's currently 750 students enrolled on the campus, 425 at the elementary and 325 at the middle school. The elementary school is at capacity. You know, of course, they try to get all the students in, you know, and they may actually be a little overcapacity or the intended capacity at the the elementary school. So there is still current capacity growth available at the middle school. And then with the expansion, it would provide some additional growth opportunity for for students there. So that 850-student is a is a pretty important number from our traffic study, just as that's kind of the a tipping point when some additional public roadway improvements would become necessary. The school, they have some estimates, you know, student enrollment growth, if you want to call it that, or and they think that that could, the 850-student range could be reached somewhere between seven and 11 years from now, growing from the current 750 campus enrollment. So one thing I want to point out, and I'm going to go back to the conditions of approval, number seven, because I believe this condition, it it references the 2009 Traffic Impact Study, or 2019, sorry. And I believe it was intended to reference the 2021, which is titled Traffic Impact Study. And the 2019 was titled Traffic Flow Analysis. And the reason that this becomes important is it talks about all of the improvements in the in the study. And there are improvements in the 2019 study that are completely unrelated to the middle school expansion, such as up at the the elementary school. And the other reason I believe they meant the 2021 Traffic Impact Study was it talks about the initial phase modifications, which the school has incorporated into our initial civil design for the roadway and and bicycle facilities. So I think that's an important distinction between those. So the other traffic impacts or traffic study, I should say, in your packet is the HROX. There's at least in draft form. And when I went through the draft HROX study, I didn't feel like our traffic impact study and the HROX study, at least on the analysis level, had any significant variation. Certainly, there's some differences in there, but from an analysis standpoint, I don't think they would point you in two completely different directions. I appreciate what Nathan and Aaron have went over as far as extending Dine Hard, having some potential benefits to neighboring roadways. But I will point out, in the HROX study, in the summary and recommendations, and again, this is draft, and there's a lot behind this statement, but in bold in that recommendation section, it says, although the level of service and capacities of the surrounding roadways do not improve with the Dine Hard Lane extension, there is benefits to the extension in the circulation of traffic, as discussed. And so those benefits, I think Aaron and Nathan both went over some of those fairly well. But to my point, their study also indicates that when looking at the engineering numbers, extending Dine Hard does not improve the level of service or the capacity of the surrounding roadways. And and I will put a caveat on that because I know Aaron will come back and and explain this. But part of the ability to make that statement is they had some other extenuating roadway connections and other stuff in their model to help that scenario. Um, so I guess that leads me back to condition two, which is the 70-foot wide easement. So our study did not consider any roadway through the the school property. And we don't feel like that our study results are in significant conflict with what the city's consultant has come up with. And then, when we compare items two and seven, I believe when I hear Nathan's description of the of the intent in that the school, if the school were to provide the easement, then the improvements would not be necessary, and they would come at a later date. But if I look literally at the conditions of approval, it says that the school district will provide the easement, and they will include all the improvements under number seven that are in what I'm going to say is the 2021 Traffic Impact Study. So as two conditions, those two conditions together do not reflect what I believe Nathan described as the intent of of the easement. I think they're mutually exclusive and particularly important to the school. Because if a condition is required for a 70-foot easement, it would be financially irresponsible to construct all of the items in the Traffic Impact Study, considering that when a roadway were built through there, it would take many of those improvements out. So part of the improvements that the traffic study that we prepared suggest initially with the expansion of the of the middle school project and before that 850-student threshold is reached is Brian described these, I think, fairly well in his opening remarks. But realigning that campus intersection between the roadway or the access road up to the elementary school and the north parking lot area by the ball field. And then it would also, the initial construction was, it was recommended that some handicap parking in the middle school parking lot be adjusted, which would provide a much larger staging area for parent or student drop-off and pickup. And then modifying that entrance at Dine Hard to include a better connection of the bicycle and pedestrian access up to the to the pathways that are on campus. So that bicycle connection, we're doing the site civil design for the school district as well as the traffic stuff. And the initial site civil design does include a connection up the access road for pedestrians and bicycles. That brings us to the condition number three, which essentially is requiring 10-foot width pathways. Those pathways that are in the initial civil design package are eight-foot pathways, which is fairly consistent and actually even larger than some of the current pathways on on the school. So that was, you know, we we want you know, we we want to make sure that you understand, we aren't resisting putting pathways on into the school. We've actually accommodated that already in the in the civil design. But full ten-foot wide shared use pathways is not the intent. The intent from the school district's side is to not have a through pathway on the school property with the exception of of the trail that's in front of the the school property, but rather, the pathways coming into the school are strictly for the intent of school access. So, I think, go ahead.
I was going to say, just just to add to that, in these days, with security of school sites being an being an important element, there is a there is a concern about control and making master plan pathways through the school site. That's that's open to public use in in limiting some of their control of their facility. We don't think that's positive. We look at this more as a destination to get users of the facility to and from there instead of a master plan pathway through the school site.
So, who's going to tell us about the four things that you objected to? Because we don't have a letter from you. And we're trying to capture all of this, but the stuff that's been approved through planning and zoning, what's before us are recommendations, there's one through eleven, and it sounded like you had many things you objected to. So, could someone please tell us that?
I'd be glad to run through those quickly and then follow up with any questions you have that any folks we have here to address them. When we look at Item Number Four, which has to do with covered parking. Basically, the figures that are cited here do come from your recommended table or how many are recommended for certain purposes. So, it lists for schools, the number that are that are recommended based on classrooms. When we look at this, we don't think it makes sense. Gives you a recommendation, it says, or per conditional use review. So, we really want to defer to your judgment there and and look at this issue because we want to make sure we're spending dollars effectively at the school. Right now, we're calling for, based on the chart, forty-two long-term and four short-term bicycle spaces is what's being requested. The situation typically with a school is, if you're providing those to get bikes out of inclement weather, well, historically, we don't get much ridership during inclement weather to a school. That's not really common for parents to send their kids off to school in in bad weather on their bicycles. So, first, so that that doesn't make a lot of sense was as far as the counts and the numbers. We're not against providing some an adequate number, but if we compare that with a schools got by far the highest counts of bicycles. I understand that's going to be hired to some other uses, but for instance, if you were to do a fifteen thousand square foot manufacturing plant in town, and you want to talk about what they would need to do to get folks to there that wanted to ride bicycles, they're only required to have one long-term space for fifteen thousand square feet. We're asking for twelve thousand foot expansion here, and they're in no short term. So, in some of these cases, there's great disparities between the numbers that are being required. And frankly, to the the numbers that we're seeing for the school don't seem to align with what historic bike ridership is. And that's even with the schooling is actually encouraging bike riding through several events that they do, and and Superintendent Kingray could talk about those things they're doing. But we're not seeing anything close to those levels. We're just concerned about bringing building major long-term storage for bicycles, long-term spaces at at that rate of forty-two and then four short term. We think there's some level that would be closer to, you know, whatever you believe is reasonable, but I, you know, something in the quarter of that, in that range. So, anyway, we wanted that. That's one we object to. We don't think it makes sense. And it doesn't seem to be consistent with what else we see around the city for mother amenities that people would ride bicycles to. So, that number count seems extremely high to us. So, that's that's one we object to. We do appreciate the the city staff talking to us about what we about conditions of the existing parking lot and how that compares to some of the requirements of today. What we want to point out is that parking lot is different than a lot of scenic route facilities. It's elevated, it's obstruction from Sampson Trail. So, if if the goal is to mitigate the visual impact of that parking lot from Sampson Trail, we don't see where it is a visual impact and how it's screened out the elevation. And in the distance off the road, there's many, many examples in town of of properties on the scenic route where traffic with a parking is very prevalent and not screened nearly as well as it currently exists at the school. Further, is part of the the city staff saying, yeah, it does make sense not to require the islands for, you know, snow removal, those kinds of things. It's a it's a parking lot that works for being able to maintain it. So, we're looking at this as if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Kind of a situation, it's working well, they're able to maintain it. Where they're suggesting we put plantings is in the vicinity where a lot of snow storage goes right now. So, they're asking for quite a few plantings that we would think will be hard to maintain and really don't benefit the intended cause of screening from from Sampson Trail. So, it looks like a requirement to mitigate an impact that really doesn't exist exist in significant way.
So, that's Item Six.
That.
That you you object to that.
Yes.
What else?
I I did just want to point out, we've already spoke about seven.
Let me let me just retouch on two, three, and seven, just so they get it in in an order without me speaking engineering gibberish about traffic. So, Item Two is one of those items that that the the district strongly objects to with the seventy-foot wide easement. They don't see it as necessary and or beneficial to access to the school. And I don't, I know it's been alluded that that would improve access to the school, but that's never been vetted by either the city or the school district, and the school district already has a plan in place you know, for their access. So, that's a fairly strong, objectable item for the school district. Item Three is the next one. And the request there would be that the ten-foot width requirement be reduced to eight feet. Because these are really, these are internal school district access pathways and not a public trail system pathway.
Sorry, I'm trying to turn that off.
And then, the the last one was Condition Seven. And I'm not, if this is intended to be the two thousand twenty-one Traffic Study in this statement, I don't think the school district has objections necessarily directly to this condition. Because that's what they've already planned on doing. They're implementing what was in that two thousand twenty-one study. So, if it's corrected to be two thousand twenty-one rather than two thousand nineteen Traffic Impact Study, I think that's acceptable. But if the Condition Two is held fast, then Condition Seven makes no sense for the school district. Because those improvements that would be required under Condition Seven would eventually be destroyed by a roadway going through in the seventy-foot easement.
And then, just one last related comment on Item Nine. We're not necessarily objecting to it if the approval is given less those those conditions that we just discussed, but should that not happen, on Number Nine, we have one year to get the building permit from when the approval happens. And if we did not have control over our own site and our own design based on another future road, that mayor may not happen, how do we comply with that? So, that that's also a concern because time is an issue. Getting things taken care of, why construction costs with hopefully before they rise to much more. There's there's a number of things that are time sensitive. And again, I just wanted to point that out. It kind of puts us in an impossible situation to get an approval on something that we have no control or no information on. So, I feel that future work.
So, Mr. Mayor, that particular thing has to do with applying for the building permit, not the approval of the building permit.
Correct.
Yeah.
And that would be a concern because how do I provide documentation, engineering data for a design of a road as part of my building permit? So, that'll be able to gain occupancy at the time that it was constructed if I don't know what the primary driver trying to design to.
Wow. Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Was all of this presented to the planning and zoning, or is this the first time that this is all? This is like hitting us cold. There's nothing in writing from your company. We've reviewed our packet. And it's like, and I'm assuming you want to get approval soon. This is a major disconnect for us.
I'm just confused as to whether planning and zoning are on all this testimony.
I believe what we've objected to here was also objected to planning and zoning. We raised all these as concerns with planning and zoning at at the end, and we actually had extension of time. We waited several months for the traffic study from the city to be able to maybe shed some more light on where we should go, but it is a difficult problem. We're not trying to be disregard concerns of the community, but we're trying to represent the interest of school district, be able to meet the needs of growth in in what's happening. So, yeah, we did. We did bring this up, and we did have several opportunities to do that.
But before they wrote these conditions of approval, this was all, this was all the same, this was all the same presentation?
I don't know.
I think essentially along the same guidelines, yes.
Okay, so, let's hear all of it, whatever else you guys are objecting to. And I would say the chances of us making any decision on this are slim tonight. But we do need to hear all of your objections. If you'd like our help on getting your conditional use permit approved.
Do either of our representatives have any other topics we didn't touch on that you'd like us to address? I think that.
But I will just share share with you as the mayor, this is very disappointing. If if we were going to work together, we need to work together, and I'm surprised I didn't have a letter sent to me a week ago outlining all of these objections, but
I'm sorry, apologize for that.
Let's keep moving on. So, whoever represents the district that wants to tell us more things that you're not going to do, please tell us everything. We need the stuff put on the table.
If you look at the at the findings of facts, and this really isn't, other than these issues I've brought up, there's many things that we're refined with, right? Where there's, if you look in all of all the findings, we're led to comply, and we are in compliance with most most things. So, these are, these are the ones of concern. These are the only ones that we're raising tonight for your consideration.
Well, there's only nine of them or eleven, and I think you have five or six, depending on how you interpret it, that you object to. So, that's a pretty big deal. It's not trivial.
And we will agree.
So, let's continue on. And we'd like to hear from all of your spokespeople on what else, if there's any additional objections. Because this went through a very detailed planning and zoning meeting. And their recommendation to us is a lot different than what we're hearing tonight. So, continue on.
We have no others. Those were previously presented, and they weren't accepted. They they made their recommendation in opposition to our our recommendation.
Okay. So, that's it.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, if I can ask a question? Since I didn't was not the lawyer sitting through the P and Z process, so help me understand something. I if I if I heard you correctly, that the total number of students is not at capacity. Is that what you said?
So, that was somebody, Mr. Martin, and I think this.
That's correct.
All right. So, but there are queuing problems, even though it's not yet at capacity. Is that correct?
Generally speaking, those queuing problems are internal to the campus. There was some exceptions, weather-related exceptions where which is what sparked the first Traffic Study with basically people sliding backwards, you know. So, it generally speaking, those queues queues for a parent or student pickup and drop off are internal to the campus.
That's the two thousand nineteen study?
Correct.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And if I may, some of the what we're proposing to address as part of our improvements on the site is to address some of those internally.
Is there a plan to address the ungodly amount of parents that pick up and drop off their kids at school instead of riding the bus? I mean, more buses and bus drivers are a whole lot cheaper than regrading, repaving, redoing a whole road, right? It's, I mean, that's half of our CO2 emissions is from parents picking up and dropping off kids. It's insane. And that's if I mean, that that's the root of the problem should be addressed.
They're getting at the freedom to drive people's car for people to drive their car.
Yeah, no, it's a
Anytime anytime you have, you know, five hundred or so cars come at one single time and leave at, you know, a minute later, I mean, you're going to have problems. You know, I have I have two kids at the middle school. It's a mess.
Make them to school and drop, pick them up and drop them off every day?
They're sick, and he won't take the bus. I mean, when the weather's nice, you know, he'll ride his bike, but but um, but it is, it is, I mean, my experience is it is internal. There is rarely a time where the traffic backs up so much that, and it's the elementary school traffic that's really the one that backs things up. But there is rarely a time that it does back up out into the intersection where you can't, you know, where you're at a stop sign and you can't actually turn into the school property.
So, Bill, this is a, I have a process question. This feels a lot more complicated than the first one that you advised us on. There's, of these recommendations, this all went through planning and zoning. Half of them are objected to, or a third of them. They're significant. Our staff has done a lot of research and interpreted the data correctly, in my opinion, and brought to us something that's acceptable to us and city council. But it's clearly not acceptable to the applicant.
Mr. Mayor, you get to weigh whether it's acceptable or not. The council gets to weigh this, the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission is just a recommendation.
So, so if we chose to approve this with all the recommendations, then balls in your court.
That's what.
You do the project or you don't, right?
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you you have to make findings of fact and conclusions of law. So, you have to go through all of the different conditions. And you have to decide, do these conditions exist? Do these facts exist? You have to answer all of the questions. And so, you have to decide if you have enough information in front of you to make the decision tonight. If there's anything that you want additional information on, you can ask for that additional information. But you're not done with your hearing, and the superintendent of schools is still here. There's others. There's others that may want to testify and provide information to you. You're not done with your fact gathering. So, and staff rebuttal is still available. So, I mean, you're not finished with your fact and information gathering process.
Well, let's continue on gathering facts. And you're right, we're not going to close the public hearing until everyone's put their cards on the table. And we know that what people are objecting to.
So I have some questions and I didn't think there is some, as the mayor alluded to, that we may not be able to get all the information tonight. And, you know, we have to have a special session to vet this out. And that may be necessary. So I, one of mine is to legal counsel too. And it was a city decided that Fox Ridge didn't have to devote the 35 feet with good cognizance. And, 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 you know, they just said, you don't have to. So now we're going to say, well, then the school does have to. And so, and I think about fair compensation to the school and what that looks like. And our city right, I mean, we have a right. And then I think also a somewhat responsible fairness. But so we can, we can just tell them that they have to provide the 70.
And so the issue, Mayor, members of the council is whether or not the, it becomes an issue of proportionality and whether this particular application has whether these additional improvements that are proposed and the additional 125 students will require whether this additional right of way the city is including as a condition, a proposed condition is proportional to the development that's that's coming forth that they're proposing to do. And is it a proportional exaction requirement? Or not, in this instance, the proposal is not that the school district build the extension of Dine Hard and only to provide an extension of Dine Hard. So the dedication of right of way. That's a legal question. That's a, it's a proportionality. And also what we call nexus is what they're doing sufficiently big, if you will, to require that dedication right away. That's, that's a big question.
May I ask on page 142 of the packet, the last sentence there says, as the applicant is in violation of the terms and conditions of their CUP approvals, they are considered a nonconforming use and cannot be enlarged without remitting the nonconformity.
That has to go back to the 1994 one.
Yeah. Well, that talks about the 2006, but that statement there. How are we weighing that statement in this process?
I mean, as a part of the problem here is that they, they were only required to dedicate 35 feet. And they still have that, but the other 35 feet's gone. And that was Fox Ridge Development. So, um, you know, are they, I mean.
If I, if I may, I, I, I believe that 35 foot easement for utilities is already there. There's a city water line up through there. So I'm not sure about being in, you know, out of compliance with their original conditions because that was part of the original CUP. I don't think the school's ever denied that the existing 35 foot easement is there.
I think there does need to be some clarification. There's utility easements that exist. I'm, I'm not 100% convinced that the public right of way easement has been recorded. Brian, can you clarify that?
Yes, to my knowledge, there has not been a public right of way dedication of 35 feet. And additionally, the minutes from the Fox Ridge development indicate that the school was actively working with the developer to not get that extra 35 feet dedicated. And have tried to avoid having to dedicate that in some way. That is.
When I read that, I looked at it in two ways. I thought the 35 feet dedication required upon such time as a proposal was submitted to school to go for a determined purpose. And I'm not sure that I would think of what Mr. Hopkins comments were in a meeting to construe something as official for the school. That, you know, that they would, to me, to be out of compliance, so it had been shown somewhere where they had appropriate, appropriate people made a decision to reneg on their 35 foot. So I, I'm, I'm not sure that we, not saying again that, that we don't need the 70 feet. I, I, I'm not sure on our legal standpoint to use their noncompliance would stand up.
So Bill, that statement there, are we out of our considerations?
I'm, I'm not, I don't know that it's been fully vetted.
Okay. That's the bottom of page 142. Okay, so Nathan, maybe you should, you've heard the official position of the applicant on things that they object to. Is there anything you would like to rebut or discuss in front of council?
Yeah, so certainly can appreciate those concerns and I'm sure they're very valid. The, the, the problem here is, is that the, the alternative approach hasn't been fully vetted. So there's no, there's been no engineering approval of the alternative of providing, providing the easement. So we would have to, you know, continue to work with the applicant to get to some level of engineering approval if the easement wasn't required. Because the, the two, two teams, the city staff and the applicant staff just kind of stopped. I, I do think there needs to be some clarity on condition number seven. The, the way it's written, and I appreciate what, what Joe's saying. I, I don't think the intent was for the 2019 Traffic Impact Study to be identified there. The 2021 Traffic Impact Study is much more informative and much more specific about what they intend to do, even though that study has still not been approved because we're still debating some of the traffic numbers that they're using as well as what the required mitigations would be along Sampson Trail or the intersection. But to clarify on condition number seven, the intent wasn't that they would build a bunch of things that wouldn't help the school. It specifically states anything that would be within the, the area of the future roadway would not be required to be constructed, but that the other internal on-campus improvements would be. And so I think that probably could be better articulated if we had had opportunity to work with the project team and clarify specifically what those are. But because we haven't had that back and forth, I think staff was trying to combine recommendations that were in the spirit of what was, what was expected and, and not to assume that the school would be committing any additional costs to their campus that the future roadway might mitigate.
I have another one. Well, let's let Nathan finish on, so did you hear all the objections tonight? Do you have any other, like, what about item two? What about item three? What's your thoughts on those?
Sure. Yeah, so item number two is, is the nexus of, of this whole application. The city, the, the position of this planning and zoning recommendation is to require the easement to allow everybody an opportunity to look into that. Provides the school some, some opportunity to decide what they want to construct and what they don't. There's certainly some improvements that they've identified that, that could benefit like a pedestrian or bike connection between the middle school and the elementary school that, that doesn't exist today. There's a break in that sidewalk system. And there's probably some improvements to some of their existing entrances onto Sampson Trail north of Dine Hard. And those are things that they, they can consider and we can evaluate. But certainly number two is the main problem, I think, for the school. They, they don't think that that's in the best interest of the community or the school district. And so, you know, if you pull back that additional 35 foot easement, which, you know, if we assume that they're under a certain condition to provide 35 today, we kind of go back to the drawing board and we have to work with them to, to normalize what those improvements would be. As far as the, the, the bike path being reduced to eight feet. You know, it's interesting tonight, I think we did hear new testimony. I can't be specific because I don't, I don't have the, the planning and zoning hearing memorized. But, you know, eight feet is the minimum recommended multi-directional, multi-use pathway standard. 10 feet is what we typically try to build where possible. And if there are constraints, you know, we recognize that. But that provides the safest way in which people can maneuver, whether they're, you know, a family going to school on bicycles or kids going to school and then other people, you know, going in opposite directions. But the, the new testimony was the idea that we didn't want to create some kind of pathway that circum, that, that, that went through the campus. And so that if future development happened to the east of the, of the campus, that it would not be public access to cross the campus to get into town. And that's a little bit challenging because I think it's really challenging to think how you would create a pathway system where that, those future neighborhoods could get into town because you, you, you have the existing subdivisions that, that don't have any of these facilities. So they'd basically be walking and biking in the street. So not really a strong concern on, on number three. Certainly wouldn't want to look at it from a, an engineering level when we get a grading and drainage and real specific on, on why we couldn't do 10 feet versus eight feet. I, I don't have a strong opinion on number four. That's a planning requirement. It certainly seems with 700 to 800 students that you would have a certain number of bicycles looking to the future and what the goals of our community. So that's more of a planning issue, similar with the landscaping concern. And then I think I already spoke to number seven.
Thanks. Yep. All right. So let's, thanks, Nathan. Anything else, Brian, that you would like to say on, while we're on, on those items?
Thank you, Mayor Giles. That will work up these in reverse order because I think it's a little easier. Number nine, the expiration date, one year. That is again to apply for a building permit. I have very liberally used the terms prior to certificate of occupancy rather than prior to building permit to allow the school district to get going with construction as soon as they can. So I think one year is absolutely an achievable goal in this. Do, do have the discretion in code to extend to authorize a longer time limit on that.
Okay.
Number seven, as Nathan said, specifically states, unless the need for specific improvements is negated by the construction of a roadway along the southern property boundary for the requirement. So things that would be within that easement or would be challenging to integrate effectively in with a future roadway would not be required to be constructed. To be clear, I was referring to the 2019 Traffic Flow Analysis, which I referred to as the 2019 Traffic Impact Study. The phasing plan, starting on page 214 of your packets, that has the implementation plan was what I was aiming for. Number six.
So, so hold on a minute. You were specifically referring to the 19.
Yes.
Traffic. What, what's the correct name of that?
Traffic Flow Analysis.
Okay. So we could edit that if we wanted, if the council wanted to approve that. Okay. And you feel that that's still helpful, that 2019.
Okay.
And so, Brian, can you repeat the page number you were?
214.
Okay, go ahead. Thanks.
And then number six is regarding landscaping. This is along Senecroft and it is also a parking lot larger than 50,000 square feet. We have the authority to require both Senecroft landscaping, three feet, three tree, one tree and three native shrubs per 10 feet of linear street frontage, which is what these numbers come from. And then 10% of the site or the parking lot landscaped. As I can allude to, that introduces challenges on an existing parking lot and with no removal and operations. So it's a reasonable compromise, in my opinion, to just require Senecroft landscaping to provide some landscape screening from Sampson Trail and to improve the aesthetics along that corridor.
So hold on a minute. What, what, if anything, would you change on six?
I would not change any.
Okay, that's what I, so you would keep that?
Yes.
Your, your rebuttal is you, we should keep that. That's your input, okay?
The numbers three and four together. This is a site where the majority of the users don't have a driver's license, can't drive themselves. And there are known traffic and queuing problems. Every one of the kids that ride the bike is solving the problem. Right, we should be going above and beyond to reward them and to do what we can to encourage that behavior. And again, 10 feet is what is shown in Pathways Master Plan is our standard. And the 42 long-term bike parking is per code. Number two, I think Nathan has pretty effectively.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Next up is public comment. This is a public hearing. We received four written comments. Everyone got that? You reviewed those comments? My take on that was, you know, people were pretty supportive of what came out of planning and zoning of those four. Did you get a different take on that?
Have those been shared with the applicant?
Did you share those with the applicant?
I did not. I.
Can we share that with the applicant?
You must share those.
I mean, they are on the line, but.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Okay.
And they need to have them before the, I mean, they need to have them now.
Okay.
All right. While, while we're working on that, let's see. Has anyone signed up to give public testimony via the website or in person?
Not via the website, sir. Didn't you sign up over there?
No, nobody else.
This gentleman would like to give public testimony. So if you would sign up on the show there, please.
Please join us if you could state your name and your address. And then we, our tradition here, in the interest of fairness, is we, we limit your presentation to three minutes. And welcome and thank you for being here tonight to talk to us.
Members of the council, my name is Craig Groves. I reside at 154 Shadows Trail in Donley, Idaho. Proud to be a Valley County resident. Your staff, the Planning and Zoning Commission, has done an excellent job vetting this application. I'm speaking in favor of the application, including all of the, all 11 conditions. All of those were vetted during the process. I, I will disclose to you that I'm the property owner to the southeast of, of the school. And we have tried since July of 2020. The school, the city has tried. The school, the city has tried since July of twenty twenty to have meaningful conversation with the school district. I've been in front of the school district board of trustees three times and asked for a workstation. Without adequate conversation, none of these things really come together, right? And so, as Nathan said, we don't know if Dine Hard can be extended or not. Right? We haven't done any engineering. But we need to have that option open. It's the right public policy decision. If you go to a public event, whether it's a graduation or a football game, you name it. It it's not. It's not ideal. Okay? This community has a severe housing shortage. You've got a hospital that's going to open up in June. I've been told they have four job offers a week that are turned down because they can't find adequate or affordable housing. We need to work together as a team, as a community, to address these issues. I would encourage you to give the school district their conditional use permit with all eleven conditions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would suggest that we take a break so that we can get the printed out comments to the applicant. And they can review them and address any issues that they see in those comments.
Yes.
As part of their rebuttal.
Yep. So let's take a fifteen-minute recess, make sure that we have hard copies. Someone's working on that. And that they're handed out to our applicant. Is there more than just the four weeks? There's more than four comments?
That go back a few years.
The comments through the P and Z process are in your packet.
Okay, I got you.
Bill is talking about are the ones.
I'm sorry. I got you. Yeah. Public.
She just submitted them and she didn't wait. Yeah, you say four because she's.
This is for me.
Thank you.
The question. So easement was based on. Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
It might take a while.
It's going to take time to get someone upstairs to get printed copies.
Okay, please start over.
Sorry. Thank you, Annette. Thank you, Colby. This is Mayor Bobble. We will start back up. I'm going to grab half a cup of coffee. And all of council members are back in session. Applicants and all of their spokespeople are here. So the first thing we'll start with is we've handed out the public comments on for the hearing tonight, the written comments. And we would like to provide an opportunity for the applicant to respond if we have anything they would like to say about those public comments. So it could be in a rebuttal or disagreement, however, however. And there's no time limit on that. So who?
We have no comment.
I I have a comment, actually. Sorry, this is Joe Barton, Paragon. And it doesn't, you know, the comments, I think we've addressed generally in one fashion or another, the comments that were received. But I did want to clarify because I heard four comments, but I believe there's only three. Is that correct?
Yes. So there's, there's three commenters, but one commenter submitted it in two different ways. And so that's why.
Okay. Thank you. And so I guess I know mayor and council had some concerns that maybe this information wasn't presented adequately at planning and zoning. But a quick skim through at least these three, three comments, I think demonstrates that at least these three citizens appeared to fully understand the school district's objection to the easement and the extension of Dine Hard. Because each comment specifically addresses that item of the P and Z recommendations. So I just wanted bring that forward.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Hey. All right, staff. So we have quite a few people on staff here tonight helping us. Is there anything else that you would like to say to us before we think about closing the public hearing?
Thank you, Mayor Giles. I do not have any further comments. Basically, that's all I really public comment.
Thank you, Brian. Nathan, do you have anything further you would like to share?
Not at this time, Mayor.
Thank you, Nathan. Okay. Council, do you have any additional questions you would like to ask of the staff?
I do. And maybe it's best done on the public hearing so that people have a chance to address it. So I'm not sure if my question, I think, would go to Brian, but in the initial easement for thirty-five feet, you read the language that it was to be recorded at such time, there was a need to extend Dine Hard. And when I listen to the three principals that are here today. And when I listen to the three principals that are here today, it's kind of interesting. We have the school and we have the city and we have the major landowner who said, you know, the essence of working together, it is so important to us and it is, of course. And so it kind of brings us to the point is when we, if the current easement was upon the conditions of the need being thoroughly vetted or expressed, which is kind of what the schools asked and said, why, why did we not, Nathan or Brian, I'm not sure, why did we not put it in the same language as the initial one? Is there a reason that, that, you know, we, that the easement, the 70 feet is not conditioned upon the receipt or a known request to extend Dine Hard? The, as you read it the first time, that was, you know, is there a reason? Because to me, that, that kind of says that the school and the property owner have opportunity to, that the school is giving something up and the property owner to the east may have some means to mitigate, make that. With the school, oh, that's a good point. We could, we could work together better and there could be some more common ground. So that's, that's just what I'm alluding to.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Giles, Councilmember Nelson. The original easement language at such time that Dine Hard is proposed to be extended, I find to be way too vague and not like, there's no like specific trigger. So I tried to avoid that, repeating that language over again. By granting the easement, again, we're not saying we're constructing the road tomorrow. We are saying let's grant the easement so we have an opportunity to work with the school, with the major property owners. The city public work staff would wind up being a lot of the adjudicators of what is gonna meet everybody's needs. So by granting these, we're just allowing the opportunity to explore that further and find solutions that work for everybody. Or if we find that it doesn't work for everybody, we can relinquish that easement in the future as well.
And is that somewhat complimentary with the school's comment? It may be possible there is a feasible solution of extending Dine Hard Lane to the school property, but not without extensive analysis by the land developer and the city of McCall of the impacts and the on-campus mitigation that would be necessary. Yeah. Yeah, that's kind of, it's a little bit the schools. Of course, that comes, gets into the detail. What does the detail of that mean? But the, the extent then is that there would be obviously all environmental, all the everything about all the traffic across the impact of the city before that easement was.
Well, what are you, what are you quoting from? What's the document?
I'm quoting on.
Where was that?
On the school's position, I think it's on page 258. But in, in the packet.
And what, when, when was that written? Brian, do you have that?
I think I do.
On the online, it's a map.
Yeah. That's the 2021 traffic study.
Yeah, it's done as part of their traffic study.
Got it. Okay.
So 219, I'm thinking, I have it for sure right here. Anyhow, it, it just kind of.
So that information was all available to planning and zoning.
Right.
Because it was 2023 when they made their recommendation. Okay. So make your point again, then. What was your?
My point was that we really don't know why we're creating the extension as was the case when they first did the very first one in 1993. We don't know what we're, is happening on the other side of the school. And but we have permission to do, the easement exists already anyhow. I just wasn't sure if that was the wisest way to go, or if we should know really what is, what is going to be achieved by extending Dine Hard. We don't know that until we know what's on the other side.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, I had a question. I don't know if I have the updated packet from online, but on page 187, and this might kind of go staff and towards the school, there's a map that, I think this is part of the application. And there's yellow portions that show the future expansion. This is the map I'm looking at. If that helps you. And I, I think that the part that's labeled future expansion is not the part that's being proposed right now. Is that right? Okay. If that 70 foot easement was granted, would that impact that future expansion area or the leveled grass playing field area that's on the map now?
The building would be very close to the 70 foot easement. Again, that easement is including roadway, drainage, snow storage areas and a bike path. So the actual driving area would probably not be right.
Right. But that was, but I mean, in terms of them, building that future expansion later, it would still.
It would come very close to the right.
Would that be an issue with?
There would be a setback.
And same with the playing field, would that take some of their playing fields away or else it would?
Any other questions? Okay, then I have a question for you, all council members. Do you want to close the public hearing?
I would.
As the applicant's representative, could I make comment on what was just said?
Absolutely.
Okay, I, I just want to address the easement issue a little bit because it's staff's position that granting the easement doesn't necessarily mean that the roadway is going to be built. But from the school district's side, from their position, if there is an easement granted, they no longer have say in that matter. If the city, by whatever traffic means, whatever they decide that that roadway needs to go through there, the school district's already granted the easement. So yeah, in good faith, that's not the intent, I understand. But from the school's position, it locks their hands once that's granted.
But it's already been granted.
35 feet, not 70.
Yeah, I, we, we understand that. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Would council like to close the public hearing and go to the next step, which is deliberation? Talk about options? Okay.
Well, you move to close the public hearing?
I'd say as a favor, but I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
And who would like to second?
I'll second.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded, close the public hearing. I have a roll call vote on that motion.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Machesek?
Yes.
Mayor Giles?
Yes.
Councilmember Nielsen?
Sure.
Councilmember Thrower? Yes.
Okay, thank you. That motion carries. The public hearing is closed. No more testimony. Will be divided or allowed. So counsel, we can discuss the evidence that we obtained during tonight's public hearing and make a decision to approve, not to approve, or to continue the decision. Those are our three options. All right, let me start with you. What would you like to do tonight? Well, it's, it seems to me, based upon the we have public comment that all favors what's in front of us. And you know that I tend to lean towards what the public comment, what our community is asking for as it relates to a decision on my part. So we've had numerous people take the time to write and say that we, they'd love to see us approve this as it stands. Jillian, what's your thoughts?
Wow, this is a difficult one, isn't it? One thing that Bill brought up that really kind of has been on my mind is this whole nexus thing.
And that's the what?
The nexus, the whether whether the right of way requirement is proportional to the, proportional to the development proposed. And, you know, what's the nexus to that? I mean, they're, you know, talking about internal flow traffic issues and expanding. They have, there's nothing to do with, you know, future development in terms of, you know, what this district is proposing. And so I'm just, you know, that's one issue I would want to think about some more, whether it's tonight or, or or later. I'm, I'm not sure. I mean, but I'd like to have that discussion about it.